Okay, we're gonna call the September 13th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting to order. And Leslie Lambert will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Are you 12 o'clock?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have an attendance roll call, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Perry.
Here.
And Chair Fresco.
Here. And that brings us to the Planning Directors' report.
Good evening, Commission. So our next regularly scheduled meeting would be a week from tonight, and obviously that's been canceled. So we'll meet again on October 4th. At that meeting, we have the two development agreements that are related to the fire station swaps, so those will both be on that agenda. And we also have a presentation on the Electric Vehicle Action Plan. Just to remind the Commission, that will be the first meeting at the main library auditorium, so we won't be here. The next meeting, October 18th, that meeting will be at the Civic Auditorium, East Wing. So we will try to give you a reminder beforehand where you need to go, but we are gonna be going back and forth. This will be the last night that we're actually in the council chambers until early next year. But for October 4th, we're again the library. October 18th, Civic Auditorium. November 1st, we're back at the library. And then November 15th, back at the Civic Auditorium. So a little back and forth. Then the only other thing I wanted to mention, the Coast event is on Sunday, October 1st, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this is similar to the event held last year where Ocean Avenue and Main Street are closed to vehicle traffic and open for bikes, pedestrians, and other modes. So that will be again Sunday, October 1st. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner announcements?
I have one. I think Kyle's aware of this, but I'm not gonna be here October 18th. And potentially November 1st, depending upon the degree of jet lag. And you probably all know the well-being, the latest well-being update is out, well-being study, and whatever it's called, index. And I know this comes at a future point in the agenda, but I would very much like to have a presentation of the Planning Commission on that.
You can arrange that.
So coming next is the Consent Calendar. We have one item on the Consent Calendar, 6A, which is a resolution of intention to make minor amendments to the zoning ordinance for policy issues that have arisen since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in July 2015. I think that probably, considering the fact that we have three chits here, we should probably pull this item from Consent. And does staff have any information for us before we begin?
Good evening. So before you tonight is the resolution of intention to begin the formal commencement of the process, to look at the Bucket 2 policy items, and looked at the last meeting with the preliminary discussion. I hope you have a copy of the index of the policy items. It's an updated version. Oh, actually, I think Kyle's grabbing it from the printer right now. But it is an updated index that shows the three buckets and the policy items in the table. Kyle's got it. Bucket items, we've gone through. The policy, the Bucket 2 items, and these copies will also be available for the public if you'd like a copy. The policy items are shown, what's in the resolution of intention. Those topics are highlighted red. So those are the same topics that the exhibit in the ROI. And then the topics that are not in red are the topics that the Commission looked at at the last meeting and asked staff to look into further and come back at a later date. So the issues that are in red were the issues that the Commission felt were simple changes and asked staff to bring back sooner than the other issues. And so that's what's indicated in that table, and that's what's in the ROI. So with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Jennifer Kennedy.
So just to clarify, whether it's shown here in Bucket 2 or Bucket 3, if it's in black ink, it's now after this evening, if this passes, essentially in the third bucket?
No. If you recall, the last discussion we had at Planning Commission essentially divided Bucket 2 into two sub-buckets.
Mm-hmm.
In a way. What's highlighted in red is the first policy Bucket 2 sub-bucket, and those are the issues the Commission felt were simple changes. And so those are what's indicated in the ROI. And then the remaining Bucket 2 items would come at a later date after we take care of this first sub-bucket.
Gotcha. And then Bucket 3 is its own separate, yet another bucket.
Correct.
Got it. So it's like 2A and 2B?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. And nothing has changed between the ROI that we've considered at home prior to this meeting that was given to us as part of the staff report? This, that you're just handing us today, is just a clarification. So nothing's changed. This is just the bigger picture to reflect, to kind of show the staff, the old staff reports, so that we can see what's already been done.
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Super. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Leslie Lambert.
Can you give us a sense of the timing for Bucket 2B coming back?
I think we want to do that after we take care of 2A, which we're possibly looking at bringing back in October.
Bucket 2B or Bucket 2A?
2A, with red lines.
Right.
October, possibly November, depends how tonight goes, I guess.
So that brings up my other question. Bucket 2A, we've already been through and kind of come to some resolution, and you're just coming back with a language? Is that what's going on?
Yes. We come back with red lines for that, yes.
So if we had another item we wanted to add to 2A, because which has been discussed a lot by the Commission.
Sure.
You could come back with language for that?
We would make an attempt of that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Jason.
Yeah, we received an email from the Chamber of Commerce talking about the sidewalk sales and the temporary use permit limitation in the business improvement districts. Is that Item 47, which is in Bucket 3 currently?
Yes, that's correct.
And the Item 46, that's a related item, but not a part of the request, as you understand it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, my papers. So we have three chits. Our speakers are Hank Conig, Ryan Olhas, and Paula Larmour, in that order, please.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Hank Conig. No one's perfect. We all make mistakes, even me. I once thought I was wrong about something, but it turned out I wasn't. And when we make mistakes, we apologize, and then we fix it as soon as possible. We don't say, "Sorry, but you have to fix it." Well, the street wall height standard in the zoning code just doesn't work for sites over five feet in slope. This is clearly a mistake, and I think staff at the last meeting acknowledged that. And the only option on those sites is to get a variance. In other words, "Sorry, but you have to fix it." The applicant, you have to fix it. So let's move on. Let's add this item to the Bucket 2 and fix this as soon as possible. Now, staff says it's complicated. Well, if that's the case, then perhaps waive this requirement for sites that have a slope over five feet. If staff fixes it, we made a mistake, we fix it, and then work out the complicated solution to this and reintroduce it into the zoning ordinance. That's the only fair thing to do. Now, maybe that's not possible. Well, then maybe waive it for the Ocean Park District. We have two projects in that district. That's a residential district. Residential districts don't have the street wall height requirement. It's the only one. So you could do that as well. So tonight, we're not trying to resolve the issue. All we're trying to do is put it in the bucket so that it can be looked at, so that it can be looked at to fix a mistake. Thank you very much.
Hank?
Yes, ma'am.
You indicated in one of your emails that there are actually housing projects that are being affected by the difficulty of applying the wall height on slopes. How, where are they in the process to deploy the way they're being affected?
Well, we have one project that's in construction. That had a minor variation in slope. It was not that much. It wasn't the five foot. But modification was permitted up to three feet of height variation. The problem with heights, slopes, sites with a slope greater than five feet, is that the ground floor is below the sidewalk level. So if you have a ground floor street wall height measured above the sidewalk, how does it work? It doesn't. Oops. We made a mistake.
No, I understand. My question, though, is do you actually have projects in the design?
Oh, we do. We have two that have a five-foot slope, and we're being asked to get a variance. And so you have to, A, pay the fee, make all the various findings, and we have a project with someone who's out to stop the project at all costs, so we're basically saying, okay, here's some ammunition against the project, because they have to get a variance. Well, people generally interpret a variance as something that he gives a developer, because, you know, they're in the developer's pockets. No, we're just, we have something that doesn't work in the zoning ordinance. It should be fixed. It's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ryan Olhas.
Good evening, Commissioners. So in an effort of time, my name's Ryan Olhas. I'm the current Chair President, whatever you want to call it, of the Montana Avenue Merchants Association. And I was here tonight, we were under, we received several emails. I think you guys already received a letter from us. I don't know what the timing is, how fast things get to you from when we send it, but if you don't have it, you're gonna get it, about this TUP issue. And I have something prepared to talk about, but I don't want to talk about it tonight. We were under, we were told that it would be moved from Bucket 3 to Bucket 2, and that's why some of us were gonna be here tonight and prepared and all that other stuff. So if I'm gonna have to, if it's gonna be addressed next month, I'll just save you the two minutes I have remaining.
Do you have a question?
I do. I mean, that is one of the questions before us, is whether we take it on now or we take it on with the next round. And if you have some insights into the significance of doing it now as opposed to later, I'm sure everybody would love to hear it.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate it. So we, so I'm, in the past, it's my understanding that there was no limitations set to these TUPs for activities to be on the sidewalks and out in the public right away. We always get insurance and all those other things. And then it seems by many that this may have been something that was arbitrarily done. For months, we've been trying to find somebody to explain to us why it was reduced to two annually. No consideration that we know of, and people that are on my board with me have been on there for decades, have no idea why this reduction was made. I do know that it has negatively affected us on Montana. I know that Main Street has been negatively affected by it, and we will continue to be negatively affected by it throughout the years. So to give you a brief example, we have four, we've never, over the, I went back about a decade, we've never applied for more than four a year, okay? And if we were to apply for more, but these are things that support what is great about the city, like our community, the experience about coming to these micro neighborhoods in Santa Monica, what would be the drawback on having more than four? But we've never, we've never asked for more than four. Those events are our sidewalk sale in spring, our art walk in the summertime, Small Business Saturday, which we would like to do more with, and the holiday walk. So this year, when we were given the two permits as an option, we had like, we were, like, the parents put in a bad predicament, which kids do we like the best, right? And so we said, "We can't take away the holiday walk, because so many people have been coming for decades. My business has the real Santa Claus." And so people come and take pictures and all that. And the sidewalk sale is something that has been around forever, so we chose those two. Well, I can tell you that when we had our art walk this year, and I personally put a lot of energy into it, we had the highest participation we've ever had from our merchants. And we had, there were hundreds of people in the streets participating. But the perception that I heard from merchants and patrons was the event was not as a success because there weren't artists on the street, and we didn't have the music and all that other. So they thought the actual success of the event was down, but it was actually up. And that's the perception of the difference of having the TUPs, which allows us to be on the sidewalks, have the artists on the sidewalks, have the musicians on, in their designated places, you know, and stuff like that. So we know that the economy's changing right now. Our small businesses are struggling with big box and online retailers, right? So we feel that this, we're gonna, we're gonna miss out on Small Business Saturday, which we'd love to promote, and we don't have, we don't have the ability to get a TUP for that. So that's really it. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paula Larmour?
Good evening, Commission. Paula Larmour with Harding Larmour, Chair and Coseal. I respectfully request that the Commission add the 15-foot minimum street wall height to tonight's resolution of intention. Tonight's resolution intention is the initial step of announcing to the public that you intend to consider recommending a change to the zoning ordinance. By including this item in tonight's resolution, it allows staff to come back to you with a proposed recommendation to change the standard. If it's not included tonight, it has to come back with another resolution of intention. And because there's no timetable for the next resolution intention, we're very concerned. We ask you to prioritize this tonight for two reasons. One, it does affect housing projects, pending housing projects that are otherwise completely compliant with code and cannot comply with the standard. And two, even after a resolution intention is adopted, it has to come back to you guys. It's a long process, has come back to you for a hearing or hearings, to make a formal recommendation to the council, and then it has to go to the council for an adoption. So if you, based on tonight's resolution, and if it comes back with a formal recommendation to you in October, November, maybe it'll come forward for final hearings before council in November, or December, or January. But then where does that leave the next batch? It's a several-month process. So that's why we're here, asking for you to add this tonight. We also feel that if you add this standard to tonight's bucket, then staff will be willing to commit a little bit more time and resources focusing on this issue and trying to get it resolved. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you. So now it's up to us. Do we have any additional questions for staff? I do. Do any of you?
No, I was just gonna comment.
Okay. Let me just ask a quick question. Hi. So regarding these two particular issues that are, have been in later buckets and have not had quite the scrutiny of all the other things in our resolution, what does that mean to you if we ask you to do it? Do you, is, are we gonna, is it possible? Is it something that you think we really need to review more and discuss more? Where do we stand?
If you add it to the ROI tonight, I mean, the Commission itself would not have to further discuss it until we bring it back. And so we can certainly make our best attempt to provide some red lines for those two issues for the Commission to discuss when we do bring it back. And we can try to stick to the current timeline that we have envisioned for coming back.
So you don't think it'll slow us down? It's still October, November?
No, I think we can, we can give it a go.
Okay. Interesting. Jennifer Kennedy?
Well, can I ask a follow-up to that? So based on your answer, if for the street wall height issue, if we added it to this bucket, then are you sure you have enough time to devote the type of analysis to it that it needs, so that you don't bring us something that's kind of half-baked, and then we're sort of making a decision?
Right.
Or at that time saying, hey, we don't have the right amount of information, and we need to not make this decision now?
Yeah.
And so I, first, when I was reading this, and then, you know, hearing from the public, I was thinking, well, there must be a reason why you didn't put it in this bucket. But then I don't want to end up in a situation where we're going, yeah, let's add it, but then, you know, a month from now, you're like, well, we didn't really have an opportunity to dive too deep, and I think it might affect this project, but I don't know about this project, but, so can you really do it?
As I mentioned, we can try. And if it turns out that it is more complicated than we expect it to be, or it takes more time, or you do more research, certainly we can take it out of that first round, bringing it back.
But still, maybe keeping it on some kind of track?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. If it's in the ROI, it means that the Commission has given the go-ahead for that to be considered. So, you know, we can make our best effort to see if we can't bring it with all the other items. And even if we do, if the Commission feels that it's not at a place where they're comfortable with it, and, you know, the Commission can certainly direct us to bring it back again.
Okay. I get it. Thank you.
You don't do half-baked work, do you?
Try not to.
I have a question. Maybe I missed this. Why did, why was the four TUPs reduced to two? What was the rationale?
Well, actually, with the fire zoning ordinance, there was no limit to the number of TUPs that an applicant could apply for per year. When the zoning ordinance update effort began with the initial draft, there wasn't a limit as well. It was when the Planning Commission went through that entire red line process, where the Commission went from page to page. At that point, the limit of four TUPs was added.
Two?
Sorry, two. And if I were to explain exactly why that was added by the Commission...
Just sounded like a good round number, huh?
Yeah, it was a number that the Commission...
I guess my concern, from what we heard from the, and you guys can try, because I either wasn't here or wasn't paying attention. Did you solicit input from the Ocean Park Boulevard, Montana, you know, all the neighborhood commercial districts that are gonna be impacted by this?
Well, we solicited input from as many people as we could for every single section of the zoning ordinance. So when the red line draft went out, you know, we relied on, that was provided to us from people who reviewed the document. So I can't recall if we specifically went to them individually, but we certainly relied on the input from the public. So I believe, once that number was added in the red line version, I don't think, it was changed after that. So there was apparently not any input for us to change that number that the Commission...
And this is just sidewalks, not streets, right?
That's correct. Sidewalk.
And is there, is there a cost to the city for doing that?
Yeah, so I think also to clarify, I think since, since the, this limitation has been...
has been, uh, I guess, you know, revealed to the, um, to the business improvement districts, and we've certainly heard a lot of concern and comment about it. And in fact, last night, um, at council, um, you know, we authorized for Coast a waiver of that limit, you know, because of this limitation and a waiver
That's a city-sponsored event.
It's a city-sponsored event, right? So, we were able, um, to do that. Um, you know, so, I think the issue has certainly been highlighted to us, that, you know, it is, it is causing issues, um, you know, in terms of their ability to put on community events.
Thank you. Well, you said you contacted the bids, correct? But to, is there a bid on Montana?
There is.
Is, there's no, is there a bid on Ocean Park Avenue Boulevard?
Um, Pico.
Pico, I know, but not Ocean Park Boulevard?
No.
Main Street, Montana, Pico.
Downtown.
And downtown, of course. Okay.
Yeah, certainly, um, if we were to formulate recommendations to bring forward to you, we, we would include outreach to the bids.
If you were to go from two to four?
If, if we were to change whatever the number may be.
We're two now, right?
At this point, right? We don't, we don't know what the change number would be, but if we were to make a proposal...
I, for one, live in the Ocean Park community, just, the commercial district, not in it, but, um, and I, I love street fear, so it's hard for me to understand why this all happened.
Uh, so, does anybody wanna make a motion or proceed in any way?
I'll move that we, oh...
Did you have a comment?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll move that we, uh, agree to this resolution of intention, and that we add the two items. I'm a little hesitant about the street wall height, but I guess if the staff feels like they can take the time to get something to us, that's great. And then, the TUP issue seems to me, based on what I've heard, a very, very important issue and not a very difficult issue. So, that, uh, is time-sensitive and we should have it on there. So, with those two additions, I'll move this ROI.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I, I just have one thing about, having been a city staff person for many, 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 many decades, years, eons, um, I know that when something's a priority, um, we tend to pay attention to it, and, or else. And, um, and if, if, if there really are housing projects that are going, having to go through hoops that they wouldn't otherwise have to go through because of this wall height, I think that should be an extremely high priority, because I would hate to see housing delayed because of an unworkable, um, height requirement on slope parcels. So, I would, I would encourage that as a priority.
Anybody else? Or shall we vote? Let's vote.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Chair Fresco?
Yes. Beautiful. That passes. Uh, our next item, 7A, 2703 Santa Monica Boulevard. It's a conditional use permit, uh, to allow the operation of an automobile rental facility, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, within an existing 1781 square foot, one-story building. Take it away, staff.
Good evening, Chair Fresco and, uh, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Scott Albright, and I'm a senior planner in this planning division, and I'm here to present the, uh, proposed conditional use permit, 17 ENT dash 0083, for a new enterprise rental, rental, automobile rental facility at 2703 Santa Monica Boulevard. Uh, again, this, uh, before you this evening is really an, a conditional use permit for the, to allow the operation, uh, out of an existing, uh, approximately 1700 square foot, one-story, is, which is 14-foot in height, um, building located on the corner of Santa Monica Boulevard and Princeton Street. Uh, and also associated, that would be, uh, a parking lot that has space, uh, after it's, uh, resurfaced and restripped to accommodate 20 automobiles. Um, the project itself, while you're just considering the CUP this evening, uh, in the future, we'll have other entitlements that will be associated with this. There's gonna be a, uh, really, an interior, interior renovation, uh, and conversion from it, uh, for the portion of the building to remain, um, from garages to office space to accommodate the enterprise. That will, uh, also involve the removal of two, uh, existing trailers that remain on, or are on-site currently. They will be, uh, removed as part of this proposal. Uh, the building design, colors, and materials will be changed, uh, and the building will be upgraded. That will be reviewed by the Architectural Review, um, in the very near future, should they, uh, be granted this conditional use permit. Uh, part of that will involve, um, the increase of the roof height to 27 feet. Again, it's currently 14 feet. That is something that the ARB will consider, uh, during its review. Uh, there will be, uh, other parking lot and site improvements, including landscaping, that will be provided on-site, and of course, new business identification signs. Uh, the, uh, the Planning Commission, as they always have done in the past, has, always has the opportunity to provide, uh, friendly suggestions for the ARB to consider during its review. So, we would certainly encourage you, if you have some concerns with, uh, what you see in terms of the design, to provide that, and we'll give that information to, uh, the Architectural Review Board. Uh, before you are the proposed, uh, the project rendering is the, the top, uh, image that you see, and the lower image is the floor plan for the proposed Enterprise Rent-A-Car. So, just a little bit, I've kind of described that it's on the northeast corner of Princeton and, um, Santa Monica Boulevard. It's located within the mixed-use Boulevard Low Density Zone. Uh, the, the existing site itself is 65 by 150 feet, so it's about, it's 9,750 square feet. Uh, the building was constructed in 1974. It's commercial block building, pretty nondescript. Uh, it is something that's not been listed on our city's historic resources inventory. Uh, there has been a couple of recent, uh, business licenses that were for auto repair and auto sales, so, uh, I think the auto repair, actually, their business license has since expired. So, here you can see the existing site plan conditions in the middle, uh, showing the auto shop, the existing parking lot. And there is a photograph that shows the existing configuration when it was indeed for auto sales, and you can see, uh, they just really jammed those cars on there. So, this will, the proposal will certainly organize the parking lot into a, a much more sightly, uh, condition. In terms of context, this is really, uh, the, the, the subject site itself, which is, uh, noted, uh, in the, uh, red highlight, there is, um, really, it's located along Santa Monica Boulevard, which has really a highway commercial feel to it. Uh, it was the former C4, so, but again, it's the mixed-use Boulevard Low. Uh, the rear alley separates it from, uh, commercial to the R2 Low Density Residential District, and you can see, the aerial photograph kind of provides a little bit of context, uh, with this being the border, and you can see the lower-density, one, two-story, multi-unit residential that exists currently, and then the highway commercial. So, here's a couple of views of, uh, the subject site, as well as down, down towards the residential portions of Princeton. And again, the Santa Monica Boulevard, El, the street itself, is very much auto-centric. Uh, you can see here's a lot of large, almost big-box-like, uh, parking lots are very, very obvious and prevalent. Uh, so, this is the former highway commercial. So, here's just a couple of images to show you that context and how this use for an auto rental would seem to be appropriate for this location along Santa Monica Boulevard. What you're really considering this evening are, you know, there are certain operational considerations and, um, performance, environmental considerations, and, uh, potential nuisances that the, the municipal code addresses. Uh, they are outlined in your staff report, um, and it's really those factors that could have a, an influence or a negative im- impact on the existing, uh, residences, residences to the north of the subject site, as well as the existing businesses also located along, uh, Santa Monica Boulevard. They involve the, uh, the washing of vehicles, the repair of vehicles, uh, and set limitations for each. Uh, the parking and, they require the parking and everything to be conducted on-site, uh, landscaping when necessary and appropriate. Uh, it details where loading and unloading of vehicles can occur, the circulation that's necessary, keeping driveways away from the residential as much as possible, noise control, um, and toxic storage and air quality. So, all of those are outlined in your staff report, and, uh, as part of their requirement, they will have to meet all of these standards, uh, that is established by the municipal code for those. And we had done, uh, as we always do, a notice, and we did receive a correspondence from a neighbor who expressed, did express some, uh, concerns with parking issues along, uh, Princeton Street, feeling like this is just exacerbating, uh, a problem that they currently experience, and also questioning the number, there are currently four operations in greater Santa Monica, and just was questioning the need for the, the fifth additional.
Starbucks.
Maybe it's the, the Starbucks of the rental cars, but... So, with that, um, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, um, based on the findings that are outlined in your staff report, as well as the conditions of approval that are included within that draft statement of official action, which was an attachment. So, here are the images, uh, of the proposed building after, uh, renovation. So, again, these are just drafted and will be considered by the ARB in the future, but again, our recommendation is to approve the CUPs. Uh, with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Questions? Um, I think you addressed this in your staff report, but, and I think I know the answer, because I use Enterprise. They generally will pick you up at your home and take you to the Enterprise and your rent car there, so you don't drive and park, right?
That's part of their business
That's been my experience.
That's their business, I think their business model.
Right. And it works very well. Is Princeton a preferential parking street? Does anyone know? Is it?
That I don't know, I'm sorry.
Nancy's just nodding her head. Um, also, is there any toxic remediation involved in this project? I mean, I would imagine that repair area is pretty icky, or not. I mean, will, will there have to be like a toxic study done of the site before they start?
I'm sure that as part of just the normal plan check, that if that's, something is revealed, that will be, uh, addressed by our Building and Safety Division if something is obvious.
Okay. And finally, is the required parking 20 spaces? Did I, I didn't really see that as a requirement, I just see that's what they're providing.
The required parking for this is actually seven spaces.
Seven?
They're providing, um, so, the seven spaces are for, what we figured would be for employees and for customers, um, and then the additional, they're providing 20, so the 13
Of course, that's their choice, right.
The 13 would be, uh, we, we added a proposed condition for the 13 to be the maximum number of, uh, auto.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
Um, I had asked you a question on the phone about car washing and, uh, water use, and what the difference between hand washing and machine washing, and the other methods.
Well, I did my homework project, and I did my little bit of research to find out that, um, when you do the hand washing, it generally, a, a 10-minute hand wash will, uh, use 100 gallons of water, because it's, um, about 10 gallons of water, uh, per minute if you're, I, I guess if you keep the hose going constantly. But, um, our city has a, a, the Public Works Code, which is, uh, or Title VII, uh, has some very strict requirements in terms of, um, car washing, and it really has to be done with, uh, and, and what they refer to as the bucket. So, you have to use a bucket, and you can use a hose, but it has to have a, a spring-loaded, uh, nozzle that shuts off immediately. So, there are very strict requirements that ordinance, or Title VII dictates. This, as part of their condition of, the, what conditions of approval is to meet Title VII, um, so they all have to, uh, abide by that requirement as well.
Thank you very much.
Can I just remind you to disclose your ex parte communications before the members of the public begin to speak?
I drove by the site and walked around it, uh, this afternoon.
I just know the site because I drive Santa Monica Boulevard, but don't, did not make a specific visit to the site.
I have no disclosures. All right. Um, I believe we hear from the applicant next. Please, take your position.
My name is Jeff Cooper. I'm the principal of Jeff Cooper Architects, and I am the architect who's designing the project. I'm joined tonight by my staff, Tamara Susan, who is our project architect and who can answer questions about design if, uh, we go that direction, and also by Lisa Stewart, who's our entitlement consultant. Uh, before I talk about the architecture, I think that your planning staff has done an excellent job in describing the project, so there's no need to reiterate those things. And I think that all of the commissioners are familiar with the site, so there's no rea, no reason to do an orientation. I'd just like to talk a little bit about Enterprise, my affiliation with it, why I enjoy working for the company. Um, Enterprise is started as a family-owned business, 1950, and is still a family-owned business. It's one of the few corporations in America that has, um, not become public, not sold out, but still maintained a very strong family vision. In fact, it's the largest family-owned business in the United States. Getting close, but it's very close. It's also the largest, um, car rental facility in North America, correct? I'm looking at Eric McElroy, who is, um, representing Enterprise tonight. So, how did it get that way? I think one of your commissioners tonight spoke about that. They said, they said, that, yeah, I use Rent, I use Enterprise. Well, I have friends that in an effort to be green and to get in better shape have actually given up their cars. They don't drive anymore. They walk to work, they take a bike to work, and when you ask them, well, how is that? They go, you know, when I need a car, I go to the Enterprise. I rent a car, if, for the day, it's cheaper, I don't have to pay lease payments, it's not polluting the environment. So, why is it that that's the go-to place to rent a car? Because their philosophy and the way they've built a family-owned business from a one location to, how many locations in North America?
Over 2,000.
Over 2,000 locations. Is because they've taken a different approach than their competitors, the Hertz, uh, and, and the others. The approach is be a neighborhood business, be convenient for the consumers, make it easy. So, when someone needs to have their car fixed, they come pick them up. If someone has another town, uh, guest coming in, instead of fighting traffic at the airport, they can take an Uber, uh, to their hosts, and if they need to drive around town for a day, they just go to the local neighborhood, Enterprise. So, we think that this is gonna be very good for the neighborhood, and if there are four locations, it's, uh, this, I think the analogy was made to Starbucks, you know, why do we need another one? Because everybody likes to have something enjoyable around the corner, something convenient around the corner. And I think in this case, um, converting this site from auto repair and from used car sales to something that would be beneficial to the neighborhood, attractive to the neighborhood, is actually, uh, a great public use. Now, as far as the building itself, what have we done? I'll just, uh, tick off a couple of high points, and then I'll conclude my presentation. We tried to be sensitive to the fact that there is a residential neighborhood across the alley to the north, and so, um, while incorporating Enterprise's, um, branding design, which is what it's called now, the large green roof, the sloping metal roof, that's part of the look that the customers expect when they see an Enterprise Rent-A-Car, uh, we've sloped that down to the north, so that there's no blockage of light or view. If you do the solar analysis, you'll see that the shadows created by this building won't even extend to the side of the alley, and will have no impact on the house to the north. We've also taken, uh, removed all of the auto service bays on the alley, which, because they're auto-service, they have, um, drills and machines and compressors that turn off and on during the day, and they also have some of the chemicals and use, and we've converted them to office space, big office space, north-facing windows. And in order to communicate that Enterprise is a forward-looking, modern, modern-thinking company, we've used very clean facade, we're using aluminum-clad panels, so they're not gonna chip, they're not painted on-site, they're made in a factory, and the building will have a very nice, high-tech look and will be easy to maintain. It'll look just as good 10 years or 20 years from now as it does the day that it's built. We've also taken an asphalt lot that is not really very well-maintained and has no vegetation, and we've added four finger islands with shade trees. So, the customers that do park will be able to park, and the employees that do park will park under shade trees. We've added landscape buffer along Santa Monica Boulevard, which will be attractive for people who never use the facility but just drive by on their way somewhere else. And we've also added landscape buffer along Princeton. Uh, we've incorporated a car wash for the convenience of the customers, who wants to rent a dirty car? You know, you wanna get, come out and have your car available and clean inside and out, and what we've done is, we've And what we've done is we've created the entrance to the car wash on the alley, so if there are two or three cars that have to be picked up simultaneously, it won't block traffic in the single driveway. We have not moved the driveway, we haven't moved any of the trees, or we're not suggesting changing any of the trees on Princeton. And then the exit for the car wash will be right where the customer comes out of the front door facing Santa Monica. A site that has a 1.25 FAR, we are entitled, or any developer would be entitled, to build 13,000 square feet. We're building 1,000, plus 300 square feet for the hand car wash. So we're only building 1/10th. We're providing three times as much parking, mostly because of the display need, than is required. And so all in all, although I am an advocate and you would expect me to be favorable to the project, I think this is a good thing for the neighborhood and I think that people will appreciate it, and we hope that we've designed an attractive building. Of course, when we go through the ARB process, we will be open to see. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Mario Fonda Bonardi.
Yeah, I noticed in your plans, you're taking out the palm tree, and in your illustrations, the palm tree is in. And I'm wondering what's, is it in or out?
Tamara?
We initially were going to leave the palm tree.
Could you stand up? Sure, I think it's probably, because other people may not be able to hear.
You have to speak from the mic. Yes.
I don't know, but we're going to find out who does.
We initially were going to leave the palm tree until we had discussions with planning, and it was decided that we probably should get rid of it, but that will come up in the process. So it's not something that is, that should be grandfathered in with the site, is that correct? Am I correct? I, no, I'm sorry.
If we can preserve existing palm trees and trees like that, we will certainly do so. That's always our encouragement, so we will work with the applicant to see if they can be preserved and it can fit in one of their landscape islands within the parking lot.
I think to be clear there, that there is no code requirement to retain existing mature landscaping. It's something that we encourage applicants to do so if feasible.
No, the reason I bring it up is that street is blessed with palm trees. They are slowly being eliminated from the streetscape for a variety of reasons, so it's nice to preserve them when you can. This one seems to line up with one of your islands, so it should be a no-brainer if it...
I did, I did put the island in exactly the same place that the palm tree is, just in case we had to maintain it.
Well, I would recommend that you maintain it.
Anybody else? I have a question. Where, how far from the site do you store your cars?
May I ask Eric McElroy from Enterprise?
Good evening, Commissioner and Chair. What was your question?
I wanted to know how far away from the site cars are stored.
The cars are stored on-site.
So you only have 13 cars? There's no delivery of cars from other places that come in?
If the 13 cars would be vehicles that aren't on rent, that doesn't mean that that would be the total vehicles added to the site. Typically, we run an office that is in excess of 90% utilization, so if there is 10 cars on the site, you figure there's 90% more on rent.
So basically, there's not a backstock of cars, so we don't, my concern is about how we manage deliveries of cars if there's going to be a truck bringing cars over from somewhere else that's going to be parked, double parked on Princeton with the engine running, that sort of thing.
Understood. There's no car carriers that will deliver vehicles. When cars are shifted around amongst offices, they're driven by a driver team or other employees from different offices. So for example, if the office on Wilshire ran out of cars or had a surplus of cars and this office needed cars, they would shuttle vehicles over, driven over by drivers.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions?
Something I learned tonight that I didn't know, in order to reduce parking, the manager drives, the manager of the facility uses a rental vehicle.
Nice. So I think that's, oh wait, no, one more question?
Do you rent hybrids and/or EVs?
Yes, Enterprise has one of the, the largest fleet of electric, all-electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles. We currently rent Teslas.
They're expensive.
Chevy Volt to a variety of different hybrid plug-in vehicles.
So you have chargers actually at your facility?
Yes, the facilities, I believe the one on Wilshire has an electric vehicle charging station. Any of the stores that have a high, higher percentage of plug-in onlys will have the charging stations.
That's cool, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, I think that we're done with your presentation and our questions, and we'll move on to public.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have four speakers. Their names are Cecilia Hagerstrom, Malila Salati, Catherine Eldridge, and Jerry Rubin. So Cecilia Hagerstrom.
Hello, good evening. I'm here representing the neighborhood on Princeton. Currently, at 27, we are two small, family-owned businesses, and I'm here, I'm going to talk about, I have a petition that people signed and then from the neighborhood and just small business supporters. And basically, we just had a discussion and we wanted to bring our concerns to you and our discomforts with the petition, the, well, what Enterprise being in this neighborhood and what it will do to the city. So my first point was that currently, there are two family-owned businesses, small businesses. One of them's an auto repair shop and the other is a, I'm sorry, is a car dealership, and they've been there a long time, they're respected members of the community for over 25 years, and they haven't had any complaints made against them. So members of the community know Omni and German Auto, and their employees to be friendly and helpful faces. In contrast, Enterprise Rent-A-Car is a national corporation that has few ties to the community, and it's important to resist like Walmarts and Enterprises to come into the city and destroy small businesses like the ones that are there currently because the two businesses that are there would have to leave the city because there is no other place for them to go in Santa Monica. There is no other, like, place that they can lease, rent. The space is very unique, so those two businesses would have to leave to another city, possibly further away than, you know, like, possibly past Culver City, maybe like Los Angeles. And so another point that we thought, well, there's an Enterprise already on Santa Monica Boulevard, so that's another point that we thought, why do we need another Enterprise in the city when there's already one? And like you guys mentioned Starbucks, there's like so many Starbucks in Santa Monica and they're like taking over, and I remember a few years back, they took over.
Thank you.
This small flower shop on Wilshire, and so...
I'm sorry, that bell means that your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have the petition if you want.
Okay, you can leave the petition with Kyle, and it looks like Jason has a question for you.
Yes. First of all, the petition just states opposition to Enterprise located here at the site.
Right, yeah, just the concern and like the, just that there will be another big box place in the city, and it's like a big building, like current, like it's even two stories. It's different to what the footprint is currently.
I see. So, so our, our job here, this is a, as a conditional use permit, our job here is to try to anticipate how this particular use, not, not who the ownership is, but how the use would impact neighbors, how it'd impact the area. Are there particular aspects of a rental car business that you see would create a negative impact on the neighborhood?
Well, just like the foot traffic would increase so much more than it is currently because the businesses that are there currently are so different from the business that is going to take its place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have a question?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe you can't answer this, but you were suggesting that these businesses are being pushed out to, let's say, Los Angeles. Do you know where they're going or are they totally closing shop?
They're probably going to end up closing because there's no other, they have nowhere else to go. Like the, the landscape that they're renting is very unique, there's not a lot of places that they can go to. They have to find the space to rent that is very unique, like to Santa Monica, that specific space is very unique. For a mechanic shop and a dealership, they would have nowhere to go, so they would...
But you're suggesting they have to live together, they couldn't, a mechanic couldn't find a garage someplace for one business and then a small lot for a lot.
Well, speaking to the owners, they like to be together because they can pay half and half the rent, because rent is very expensive, and they can only make so much money per month, so they would definitely have to leave Santa Monica.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Malila Salati.
Good evening. Actually, I'm one of the owners of the two businesses, the dealership, and I just would like to just make a very short statement for everyone's consideration, and this is the fact that my husband, he is an Iranian immigrant, and I'm a Latina, and at the time when people are discriminating against immigrants, small businesses, successful small businesses founded by immigrants should be encouraged, not be forced out, especially by large corporations. It's just, I would like for you to consider that. We have been in business for 20 years, and we really have nowhere to go. It's very difficult, even in LA County period. That's all.
Thank you, I think.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how the Commission is going to decide this matter and what it means for, you know, the future of your business. I do want to ask if you're aware that the Chamber of Commerce and the city itself, there are, there are programs that seek to assist local businesses relocate within, within Santa Monica, so wanted to see if you were aware of that.
No, we were not aware, but obviously, we have been looking, and it's pretty much impossible.
Right.
Even if you were to find something, the rent will be, I mean, astronomical, it's just, we are forced out, and it's unfortunate that, you know, like I said, small businesses built by immigrants should be encouraged at this time, and instead, we're being forced out.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a question, several questions. Did the, did the property sell to Enterprise? Enterprise is leasing the property.
No, no.
So my assumption is that the rent has gone higher.
We were not given even an opportunity.
An opportunity to pay the rent that Enterprise is paying?
No, we found out that this was already probably being discussed with you guys.
So you weren't given the, it's really not our purview to...
No, 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 right, I understand that, but we were not given the option to pay more rent or anything, no. We were just told, you have, you know, a certain amount of time, you need to get out. So...
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Catherine Eldridge.
I'm really disappointed to be speaking to you tonight about this. I have you at Enterprise, but I find that each site is slightly different, so I pick accordingly. They are a good business, as car rentals call, however, I'm really disappointed with this particular one in that I'm on the Mid-Cities Board, and they came to us, and we asked them lots of questions, and at no time was I aware that they had a phase two to their project, or we would have had a lot more questions to ask, especially the part about raising the height to 27 feet. I mean, that's a lot different than what was presented to us. You know, it's just basic paint and sprucing up a bit, not this 27, two-phase project. Also, I'm really sorry that we didn't know that there was a neighborhood group that needed us. We would have been happy to meet with them and talk to them and at least see if there were other options that could be explored, certainly more speaking here. We need to come up with some solution and some protections for our at-risk small businesses. This kind of business used to be on Santa, on Colorado, it used to be on Stewart, there was the whole lineup before the, what, Jack Walters Project went in. Lincoln used to have a lineup. We no longer have independence like this, and we need to really start, it's not just this, but other businesses. This is the third business this week I've heard that's leaving, and the same process, they show up and tell them to get out in so much time, they don't get an option. We need to come up with some protections, unless we just want a big bucks city, because, and again, I like Enterprise, but we probably don't need five if we're going to lose one of the few small garages and car dealers we have in the city. 26 years, there goes our history right down the street. You know, I'm really disappointed. I hope they don't have other surprises for us when they hit the ARB, but I'll be watching this time.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Jerry Rubin.
Well, thank you very much, Jerry Rubin, Santa Monica. Thank you, Chair Fresco and Commissioners, City Staff. Well, I do understand the limited capacity of what you're dealing with here today, but of course, I'm sensitive to community businesses that have been there a while and are going to hopefully find another place. I urge City Staff to double down on efforts to find them and assist them, as Commissioner Perry was saying, help them to find a place in Santa Monica or nearby Santa Monica. As far as Enterprise, everything I heard about them is good. I do not think 27 feet is high, and they seem pretty sensitive about the slope of the roof and everything else, so it seems to me it's a good business, it'll be helpful to the community. I know they do rent electric vehicles and hybrids, and I encourage them to have a charging station there, not wait to see if it'll be popular, but to help make it popular by having a charging station there. As far as the tree, you got to keep that tree, even though it's not required now. Hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, there might be a fair policy that might in some equitable way work out a policy that does protect trees like that on Pr... might in some equitable way work out a policy that does protect trees like that on private property. I know there's some discussion about that happening and it's long overdue. Other cities have done it successfully. So, all I can say is I don't think that what they'll be doing there will adversely affect the community. In fact, in time, I'm sure some of the people nearby might find it convenient to avail themselves of the service of Enterprise. But I do hope in every way, shape and form that the city can do something to help the business that has been there a long time. Things do change sometimes and there is a way to help the people during these hard times. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant has three minutes to respond to anything any of the speakers said, if you choose.
Some of the comments that I heard tonight were not a surprise from the business owners. One of the comments was a surprise because I'm not aware of any presentation that was made on this project to any neighborhood wherein there was any deception or any drawings that were shown to anybody. So, I don't know what that member of the public was talking about. This is the only design that has been created for this property and I'll emphasize again that it's smaller than what's there. Right now, you have two trailers that are there. Another comment I would make is denying this conditional use permit doesn't protect a tenant that doesn't have a lease. As, these tenants don't have any lease and therefore they don't have any rights to the property. They're not the owners. No one's kicking anybody out. Maybe you should address, maybe they should address their concerns to the owner of the land. The land hasn't been sold. It's just being leased to another tenant after the existing tenants ran out. I think environmentally, what's being proposed here is vastly superior than the auto repair shop and I think it's architecturally vastly superior than what exists now. So, I urge you to help the business owners relocate. If the city has resources for that, that's wonderful. But I urge you to consider the benefits to the community and to pass the conditional use permit tonight when you vote.
Thank you very much. There is a question for you from Commissioner Perry.
Yes, thank you. So, a, a, as I look at the possible impacts of, of this use on the neighborhood, the, you know, the, the car washing stands out to me as something that could create a problem for neighbors, just the, the, you know, ongoing sound. And it looks like there could be an opportunity to, to mitigate that with either a restriction on the, you know, how often that alley side door is open or, or even eliminating that door. And I wanted to explore those ideas with you.
Yeah, that concern was addressed to me by staff just today and I responded. I'd be happy to repeat the response I gave to staff in an email. The, it's a hand wash, so other than the sound of the hose, there really shouldn't be any noise. In fact, I happen to be a licensed acoustical engineer and the sound of a, of an air gun and a compressor, which would be at least 85 to 90 dB, and the sound of a water hose, which would be about 55 to 60, would be perceived as probably, because we hear logarithmically, about a tenth of the noise that's currently there. And what disturbs, I think people move down Santa Monica because they like the sound of water, but that was just a joke. The, what disturbs people from an acoustical point of view, and I am qualified, is the unexpected noise, like the shot, the sound of a shot of a gun going off in the middle of the night. There's anything that is unexpected and that is plosive, that, that kind of noise. And repairing cars, if you've ever stood and waited for your car to be fixed, has that kind of noise. The sound of someone washing their car isn't really a very upsetting noise. Now, as far as the door and whether we could mitigate any impact by not having a door. So, to wash a car, it would be very dangerous to back up into, to have to back up your car to get it washed and leave. So, it's been designed so that Enterprise employees can take a car that needs to be cleaned for a customer into the alley where it has very little impact, take a right turn to go, open up the door, take a right turn, close that door if we take that suggestion, which I think is a reasonable suggestion, do the washing and then exit where the customer is. So, it's a through, it's a one-car garage basically with the rear door. I could ask Enterprise how they feel about the idea of closing the door during opera, you know, during, when... And also, cars aren't washed all day. There's only 12 cars there. So, if it takes, I think someone said 10 minutes to wash a car, so, and if, every car gets washed once, 12 times 10, 120, a couple hours during a 10-hour business day. It's a minor part of the day. So, I don't think it, the noise would be disruptive, but I, I wouldn't mind putting my customer on the spot and asking him how he feels about having the door closed.
As far as opening and closing a door, it would be our preference not to have to go through that exercise to wash each individual car. That would involve employee, additional employee steps and extra time to perform and/or danger of opening, closing an industrial roll-up door. So, our preference would be not to put the employee through that exercise, but if it, if it's conditioned on us, then we would find a way that it would, it would work for both parties.
And, and I understand that you're concerned about the, any safety issues with backing up into the, either into the car wash or backing out of it. You know, if, if those concerns could be addressed from a design in a, in a, in the design of the site, I also wanted to explore the, the idea that it would open up an additional parking opportunity along the alley and in the event that that was, you know, meaningful to you, then possibly adjusting the, the conditions on, the condition on the number of cars that could be kept, of rental cars that could be kept on the site.
Can, I'd like to actually address that. We're designing another Enterprise rental facility in Woodland Hills and so we're pretty familiar with. And that facility had one driveway on Ventura Boulevard and as part of the planning application, we went through an application to make it two driveways, enter and exit because of the throughput or the operational aspect to make it... Remember, when people rent cars, they're not familiar with the cars. The first time they're getting in that car, they may not be used to the, where the bumper is or where the blind spot is, et cetera. And if they're not nervous, they should be nervous because there's a very high probability that they could scrape the car or bang the car or even, you know, hurt somebody. So, it's very important, I think, for public safety and for operational throughput to have a in and out driveway. We did not apply for that here and we did that in order to preserve, we didn't ask to move the driveway. We did that in order to minimize the environmental impact on this lot and also to maximize the number of cars. The mitigating factor for us was that there was access through an alley. So, that way, cars driving wouldn't, cars that needed to be cleaned for a customer would not be bottlenecking the circulation for a customer coming to pick up a car. There'd be a second way. By closing off the, the one, there's four garage doors now in the alley. We're closing them all off. By, by keeping one, just for occasional access for car rental, what we're doing is relieving congestion and making it safer for the public. So, I would maintain that it's not a good idea to explore that from an operational point of view.
Okay, well, the example you gave was, where customers drive in the car and, am I right, the customers would not have anything to do with the, with the car wash?
No, but they'd be backing up in this, that same driveway where you come in. They would be crossing paths with cars that were trying to get in. There's just no way around it. It's a very, very... Is this the smallest lot that you've rented?
It's not the smallest lot that we rented, but any time that we can prevent customers or employees in the course of business from backing or limit that as much as possible, it reduces risk. Most of our employee accidents on the lot are when they're engaged in backing, backing into a space or otherwise.
Thank you.
I can't remember what my question was, but I can answer your question about the smallest parking lot and then Enterprise, that's the one on Lincoln and Ashland, or Lincoln and Hill. I mean, that is truly a nightmare. So, I want to compliment you on your circulation plan. And also, isn't it true that if you, if you opened and closed the car wash door, if that's one of the proposals, wouldn't the sound of that electric garage door be more than the hose?
You know, I didn't mention that. That's actually more logical than the answer I gave. The metal going up and, you know, the metal going up. You couldn't do a wood door that's, that's swinging to the alley, you know? But the, even if it was a manually operated door, the clanging of that door or if it was electrically operated, there'd be a motor. So, probably the, the quietest, most friendly way to operate it is to open it up in the morning and close it at night. So, it's just one-time close and you could have white noise playing inside the, the car wash too.
Yeah, music.
No, I don't think the neighbors would want music.
Commissioner Kennedy, do you have a question?
Did your application for the conditional use permit state that you would be hand washing the cars?
Yes, it does. And the plans that were displayed today say hand washing. We were very specific. There's no intention to put a car washing machine here. This is not a public car wash. We don't, it's also very expensive.
Thank you.
Does that conclude questions?
Does it, Mario? Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for our discussion.
Can I make a motion first?
I have a question for staff.
Oh, wait, we have a question for staff.
Is there, the, the issue that the chair raised earlier about truck delivery, is there existing a, a prohibition, just with any operation there? Is anybody allowed to pull up a truck onto the street and unload the cars on the street?
I think there's an opportunity for, I, I think deliveries can occur like that. There could be some truck deliveries, not necessarily with this operation, but trucks, deliveries are permitted with others. We try to keep those confined to onsite location if possible, if circulation will enable that.
So, in, you know, this, this applicant does not anticipate delivering vehicles that way, but a future owner of the, future operator might. Would it, would you see a problem with a prohibition within the conditions on the delivery of, of cars by truck?
I wouldn't see an issue with that. And if in the future some other tenant takes, takes over this conditional use permit and it becomes an issue for them, that, the planning commission can certainly reconsider those conditions of approval at that time.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow the first thing that you said. You said...
I, I wouldn't have, I don't...
You would not see a problem?
Wouldn't have an issue including that, yes.
Thank you.
I also wanted to clarify regarding the hand washing, that we don't actually have a condition of approval that requires it be hand washed, although it's part of it. So, you know, that's something that, again, the commission wanted to reiterate, given the applicant's, seems like they agree with it. Just wanted to point that out.
That's correct because the, you're, I think it's Condition 12 talks that it must meet the conditions stated in 9.31.150, whatever the, this, the section citation is. And that references Title 12 or Title 7, the Public Works Code.
What, what is the height limit on Santa Monica Boulevard on this site?
I believe it's 32 feet.
And what is this?
27. With, and again, this is still a one-story building. It just has a high-volume ceiling.
And was the applicant accurate in terms of his, the parcel coverage versus the FAR allowances? About, actually about 10% of what could be built on that site?
It sounded accurate to me, yes.
Thank you.
All right, I think, oh, wait, one more question?
Where might you think that the insertion of the hand wash language fits?
I think we can include it as a, around Condition Number 12. Let me see which one it was.
You could probably add it to project operations.
Yeah.
It would be an additional condition. So, we could be Condition 16, for example, and we would just subsequently renumber.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion and I guess we can discuss it more after that if you wish. Is that okay with you? I would move that we approve the application for a conditional use permit at 2703 Santa Monica Boulevard and that we add that all measures shall be taken to, to prevent removal of the palm tree on the site.
Is there a second?
Just to clarify, it would be to adopt the findings or as modified by yourselves.
Did you just do what I should do?
I just made a suggestion that you should do it. Okay.
Okay, then I, then I move again that we approve the conditional use permit with the findings as modified by the commission for the property at 2703 Santa Monica Boulevard.
We're modifying the conditions, not the findings.
You said findings.
Modifying the conditions regarding 16.
Modify the conditions regarding the CUP and the palm tree.
And the hand wash in project operations.
Oh, you're adding hand washing?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Hold on a second. All right, I have a couple of thoughts, if we may. First of all, just about the hand washing, maybe we could add no air guns or compressors to the hand washing condition?
Do you use air guns on washing?
When I go to the car wash, they do. And he said they weren't going to. It's just another one of those clean CUP things. Okay, so then we'll have that. And then I wanted to, oh, wait, no. Hold on, sorry. The loading, I wanted to add a condition just to say that loading all had to be onsite or in the alley if cars were delivered by truck rather than double parking on Princeton, for example. Again, that's another...
Where would that go?
That would be a, a brand-new condition. It wouldn't be added in the project operations. Is that friendly?
Yes.
And, and then I had a few messages for the ARB that I wanted to throw in. I love sending them messages. I'm concerned about the neighborhood-facing facade. I think it looks very wallish. I want to make sure that what they see looks like a friendly building and not a big metal wall. So, I think they should pay attention to that facade.
Can we just clarify that that's the north elevation shown in the prints?
That is the north elevation. And I wanted to make sure they check out the lighting and make sure it's focused down or shaded so that it doesn't shine into neighbors because it's really close to neighbors and it's higher than it was before.
This is all part of the motion or you're just adding?
No, these are conditions. You made the motion, so you have to approve the conditions that we add. So, those are the ones I add.
If I could make a suggestion, Chair?
Yes.
I have a little bit of concern about the truck unloading, even if it is in the alley or on the parcel. For one thing, I don't think a truck like that could get onto the site and get off. And then having that activity in the alley, it would also be problematic. So, since they've indicated that that's not their operation, you might want to just condition it so that they can't have truck delivery at that location.
Okay, so no truck delivery? Okay. All right, so is there anything else? Your turn, nothing?
I just want to say something. I am not unsympathetic to the displacement of small businesses. I, we have no control over that. I mean, it really is a real estate market issue that we, we don't control. But I know that it's, it's an issue all over Santa Monica, small businesses. But I know that it's an issue all over Santa Monica, small businesses being displaced by rents going up, although there's Barnes and Noble, which is the other side of the coin. And I really, I don't know what the city has in terms of relocation assistance for small businesses for a private transaction. But I think if they do and whatever contacts that maybe could be given to these people, if there is such an office or a staff person in the city, I don't know if there is or not, and the Chamber of Commerce would be definitely something you should pursue.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that a little bit. I don't know all of the details of the lease changing hands or anything like that. We heard a little bit about it here tonight. And in instances where a small business owner finds out about something very suddenly or, you know, and comes here and speaks to the, you know, commission and provides testimony and is having a hard time possibly transitioning their business as a result of the loss of a lease, we should maybe have a handout or a flyer. It was really nice that Commissioner Perry and Commissioner Lambert have spoken that the Chamber of Commerce may have ways to help. I'm actually not very familiar with all of those either. But, and maybe after tonight, you go home, you go to sleep, and you think, well, it's hard to reach out. Who do I call? But if we could have information here with some phone numbers, some bullet points, then when we hear stuff like this at the commission, you know, in this instance, it might not be anything that we can prevent, but we can definitely help and point people in the right direction. So I will look into it and see if there's any way that I can help even create something like that. But then it would be something that the secretary could have and get people, you know, the information they need, the resources they need right away.
And we would be happy to get the contact information for the prior tenant so that we can have our economic development staff reach out to them. You know, I'm not entirely familiar with exactly all the programs, but I know that certainly they can assist in terms of, you know, finding... We're not a real estate office, but, you know, if we have aware of opportunities and that sort of thing and maybe put them in connection with different assistance opportunities, that's something that we can certainly do.
Please.
Yeah. If I could ask the maker of the motion to clarify the language on the trees?
That the palm tree, the onsite palm tree be retained unless there's some reason, whether it's illness or, you know, some engineering issue, that it can't be. That basically we want to see the palm tree remain. Do you have another idea?
Well, I mean, that sounds like something we could recommend or we could request.
Rather than a condition?
That we could condition. I mean, what impact are we seeking to mitigate?
The removal of a tree.
I don't believe it's onsite.
It is onsite.
No, no, no. What I mean is, I don't think the impacts that we're trying to mitigate are onsite impacts. We're trying to mitigate impacts on the neighborhood.
Well, there's sort of the visual impact of removing a palm tree.
It's a boulevard of palms. There's a whole line of palms going down Santa Monica there, so it's...
Could we suggest that maybe we add that to the ARB condition since they will review landscaping as part of their review?
Okay. So let me review, see if I got this right. We have a motion to approve the findings and make the following changes to the conditions for 2703 Santa Monica Boulevard Enterprise Rent-A-Car. The changed conditions would be to... And that car washing must be done by hand and that air guns and compressors would not be allowed and that there would be no truck delivery. And there would be a note in there to ARB to pay special attention to retaining the palm tree and paying attention to the neighborhood view of the north facade of the building to ensure that it is friendly and not monumental. And...
The shiny roof?
Oh, yeah. The what?
The shiny roof. That was the only one, I think, that you didn't mention.
Oh, the lights.
The lights, the lights, the lights.
I was looking at the wrong side of the paper and there were questions instead of conditions. All right. And the lights. So we got that?
Chair, I'd like to make a minor correction. I think it would be advantageous if they were allowed to refill tires here in terms of heading toward a green society. We want to keep the air inflation in our tires, which means they should be allowed to have a compressor there, not to change tires, put tires on and off, but actually fill them up if they get low. So I wonder if we could take the... The air gun is off, but, I mean, is in, but take off the compressor because they're going to need that.
I guess it sounds sort of noisy, but I guess...
But it's brief.
Yes.
Briefer than to get all the water out of the nooks and crannies. Okay, so that's no air guns, silent on compressors. So we're just talking about applications of a compressor and not the compressor itself. All right. I think we're ready to vote. Before we split any more hairs.
Commissioner Fonger Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Chair Frisco?
Yes. So you now have a conditional use permit. Congratulations. And we will move on to...
Do you appeal period?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Sorry. I have to put on my glasses. You have a 14-day appeal period, public, if you would like to appeal this decision to City Council and see if you can get a different decision. Thank you. So our next item is a STOA. My favorite STOA. This is 423 Ocean Avenue Development Review Permit. We continued it from last time because I had found three words in it that I didn't like. They were on page 19 in Condition 23A to remove the words "to the extent feasible" from the direction to retain all existing roof lines and eaves on the historic building. And staff looked into it and concurred that the discussion did not qualify that condition and that we could remove those three words and be consistent with our discussion. So we can approve this motion if somebody would like to...
So moved.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Beautiful. I have to say, I just have a feeling of closure because I actually signed the STOA for the designation of this. I was Chair of the Lambers Commission at the time, and now I get to sign the STOA again.
I think we have to vote first.
But we have to vote. I just... Well, after we vote, I'm not going to talk about it ever again, so... All right. Vote?
Yes.
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 Okay. Done. Never talk about it again. So our final item on our agenda... What are you talking about? There were no chits. We are now... That was 9A. No, that was 8A. I'm sorry. I need to color code this. So now we move on to 9A, which is a discussion item. Discussion and possible action on setting a date for a planning commission retreat. Discussion may include purpose, goals, activities, and potential locations for retreat requested by myself. I've felt that maybe this commission could have a retreat for a while. As I said earlier today, when I first came on the commission, I was the first new commissioner after the zoning ordinance update, and all the other commissioners had PTSD. And they were all... It was just a very kind of tense environment, which I'm happy to say has relaxed quite a bit and it's going nicely. But now we're kind of in a new phase in this commission where we've finished a huge second part of all of that, which was the DCP. And part of that took a lot of things off of our agenda, which was the administrative approvals. And I think it's a good time for us to kind of sit back and remind ourselves of our mission and talk among ourselves about what we think the commission should be doing in a retreat kind of setting where we can just have informal talk about our general direction. So with that said, I had a couple of ideas. Some of these things may be things that we just all nod about today and we never talk about again. Some of them are things we could agendize for this setting and some of them are things we can save for a retreat. And I'll just throw them out there and then you guys can say what you think. So I think we should certainly remind ourselves of our mission and refresh our focus on what we're doing here. And I think a little team building, acknowledging each other's strengths, and just kind of getting to know what everybody is passionate about and knows about would be a really great thing for us to be able to defer to people during discussions and work together, especially when things are hard. In terms of the administrative approvals, I was asking staff earlier about some of the things that kind of are an unintended consequence about that, which is sort of that a lot of projects which would normally, of a certain size, which would normally have been very visible, are now a little harder to see and know about for the public. And even though it's in terms of the, from the planning point of view, it's more of a... It's, you know, just a check to make sure it's a co-compliance approach. I thought maybe we could think of ways to make that a little bit more visible in some way. And staff had some good ideas. And maybe you guys have ideas. I mean, this is something we can kind of talk about at the retreat. So you think that's a retreat thing? I think that because we have different strengths and different passions, we might want to look at... This is apparently a very controversial idea because it's already been kind of talked about with the planning commission. But there may be opportunities that are not quite as heavy of having subcommittees where people who are more passionate about things can kind of develop ideas with other commissioners more and see if there's a place for that in this commission again, kind of in this new, more abstract approach that we're going to have when we're looking at less individual projects. So that would be something we could discuss if there's a place for it and a use for it and if there are topics that it might apply to. But, you know, I'm looking for ways for us to draw on the expertise we have on this board to develop ideas instead of kind of come, doing our work individually and coming in here and doing things on the fly. I feel like it's kind of like that sometimes for really big conceptual ideas. Another thought I had was that we have so many more big projects, not quite as big as the ones we've grappled through, things like the GAMP and the Memorial Park Plan, PICO Plan, R1. There's a bunch of them. And even more that staff is probably keeping under their hats. So we need to... And a lot of these things have been given various levels of priority and urgency based on when they came before City Council, and we've been directed to act on that. And I think maybe a discussion would be to look at all those things and maybe reprioritize them based on where we are now with that stuff and then send a recommendation to council to see if they would approve of us ordering things, you know, based on urgency among neighbors or if it's a place where things are really happening right now that we need to get the plan in place or stuff like that. There was a discussion of this idea of Speakers Bureau that would come to the planning commission and kind of educate the commission and do it from here so that people at home can tune in and learn details and finer, higher-level information on particular topics of interest and relevance to our work here. And that would be something that maybe we could discuss, what kinds of topics would be appropriate for that and how often we would want to do that. And then we could beg for funding for professionals to deliver that information. We might also want, in planning our retreat, to think about whether or not we want, what kind of person we would want to be a facilitator for the group. And, you know, I would like to feel that staff could participate in the retreat with us rather than run it. So to me, that seems like somebody from the outside, or at least outside our group would be. And we have to think about where it would be and when it would be. And of course, there are two of us missing today. And hopefully, they will listen to the tape, and I will call them both and make sure they do. All right. I'm getting... I'm almost done. So basically, okay, go ahead.
No, you know, you finished. This is your idea. This is your project.
Right. I mean, basically, those are all of the things that I was thinking. Those are all the kinds of things that I would like to know about from you. And I also, we would need to come back in maybe a month from now and everybody could develop lists and comments and, of course, bring your calendar and see if we can nail this down. Okay. Now I'm done.
I think those are all terrific ideas, and I think you pretty much said it all. But there are a couple, there are a couple items that I'm interested in. One is, I think it'd be really good for us, and I know that Dave and Jing try to brief us every meeting on what's coming, but it's always sort of like a 30-day or 45-day time horizon. I'm kind of lost about where the PICO Plan is, the Memorial Park Plan. I think it'd be really good for you, and I don't know if the retreat is the place to do it or here is the place to do it, but we never seem to have time here, of where all that is, like the next 12 months. Because I'm getting asked by the community and I haven't a clue.
Yeah. And we will be bringing that forward to you, kind of our work plan, in terms of what projects like that are pending. What our intention is to bring those to the commission and council. And then after we stop at the commission with that information, we will then go on to City Council and get their approval of that work plan. So we will prepare it and ask for your input and then take that to City Council.
Okay, cool.
Whether or not it's appropriate at the retreat, I think depends on when the retreat is.
It'd just be good to know, whatever the venue, just to get to know what's going on.
We will get that information together and make it available.
And that brings up another point, and it's a sticky point, and it's a point, I think, that I've been on a couple of commissions with the city that they all have. And that is, how much control do we have over the work program of staff? And I think it's probably close to zero. And I understand that. I mean, you have a budget year, you know, program funding. City manager really is who you report to, not us. But how does that all play out? I mean, if something's a really high priority for us, where does that go? And I think that may be a retreat thing to discuss.
Yeah, we could talk more about it, but generally, you know, the City Council gives us direction on our priorities. If the commission has strong feelings about that, then the commission should direct those considerations to City Council and allow them to then use that information to guide our work program.
Yeah, I'm not really sure it's a changeable system. I think it would just be good to understand the system. Because I know that there are times commissioners get very frustrated by why something hasn't been done. And I feel you guys are sort of getting beaten up because it isn't done. And I'm sure there's a reason why. And it has to do with your priorities and McColl's priorities, the council. I just think there's like a disconnect. I've witnessed it myself. And then the final thing is, and there'll be more when we all talk about this. I think it'd be good to sort of think about, rather than sort of doing silo decision-making among commissions, of how can we, how can we interact with other, such as the Housing Commission? And Amy actually brought that up a couple of weeks ago, that if they're looking, and maybe they've already done it, I don't know, at the Affordable Housing Production Program, that really is our interest, too. And it's kind of weird to have the Housing Commission go to the City Council, understandable, with housing items and recommendations that we really haven't been part of and maybe should be. So maybe joint meetings? I know when we individually go to commissions... I know when we individually go to commissions and testify, it's not always the most effective way to give input. In fact, it's not at all. And I think also, like maybe the Social Services Commission, this wellness update that's come out is really disturbing. The few things I know about it, I've heard about the results, it's disturbing. And it really should, I think, be, you know, be sort of a backdrop for our decision-making. If people are most concerned about their housing security in Santa Monica, that's something we should know about and think about when we're doing housing decisions, for example. So I'm just thinking like, sort of like crossing over among silos and communicating joint interests and positions. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, I'd like to first thank the Chair for raising these questions. And the only thing that I would like to tweak slightly is just an expansion beyond the idea of the Speakers bureaus to just the general idea of this commission giving thought to how we can better educate ourselves about ideas that are, you know, maybe are percolating in this community but in other communities that we can bring into the local discussion. So just the broad, the broad concept of both commissioner education and public education on these issues. And, you know, of course, I don't know if this is what you have in mind with, you know, talking about our mission, but, you know, having, and I don't know if this is at the retreat or if this is an agenda item here on down the line, having a check-in on where we are on our, on, you know, the major goals of the LUS and our, you know, where we are on expanding mobility options, just really looking for any opportunity that we can to think big picture, which it sounds like that's the spirit, you know, with which you're approaching this.
Thank you. Jennifer?
If it turns out that it's like a day retreat where, you know, we're going to be together all day, we're going to eat in the middle of the day and like break things out and kind of cover a bunch of things. Again, I don't know if it's something for the retreat or just a discussion that we could have offline or on the dais, but it's things that we can do to make the work that we do more efficient. And one of the main things that pops out to me is the information that we're provided on the dais, talking about like what is included in our packets, maybe what more information we might need. I'm not going to say what things we don't need, but as an example, I'll say, like the staff reports. I've noticed after all these years, they kind of change a little bit, have changed a little bit since I started on the planning commission, but very, very little. And there have been times when, you know, we've had really big staff reports that have like redundancies or sometimes reports that I feel like there should be a little more information. So I'd be interested in taking like an hour where we all reviewed some staff reports and worked with staff in a collaborative fashion and said, you know, you know, this report took me two hours to get through, but I could have read it in 30 minutes if the information was condensed or organized differently. And I don't know if anybody's interested in that, but after seven years of reading staff reports, I have some comments that I'd like to share, but complete constructive criticism, I think, you know, because it might even make staff's job easier.
I have two words for you. Multicolored pens.
Well, I definitely, this is something I could talk about for a really long time, so don't get me started now.
I won't let you start it now.
Okay, but that's something that's been on my mind. Actually, I have a list of these kinds of things, but I have, that's the one thing off the top of my head. But I'll review my list, and then if we get down the line to, or when we look at our calendars, maybe I'll chime in again. Thank you.
So moving a little faster here, I'd like to move that we all come back, including the absent people, with our top three things we'd like to discuss or cover in the actual retreat. Time to be determined and all that. At that point, if we all did that, we would have 21 items. Maybe some of them would converge and we could boil it down. Realistically, one of the problems we have is we really don't have a lot of time to dig in deep into things. Some of these things are simple, some of them longer. But realistically, if we had a six-hour retreat with a lunch in the middle, we could maybe get through six topics, six areas in depth, an hour each. And that might be too short. So, but starting with 21, getting it down to six, I think, is doable, and then taking it from there.
I was also going to suggest that if you had any legal issues that you wanted to discuss, pertinent topics like bias or, you know, things that you may have curiosity about or legislation that you would like me to talk about, feel free to ask.
So you're not planning on joining us? Oh, okay.
And it's a public meeting, right?
I'm just, yes, I'm just saying that you could provide me in advance with any suggestions that you have as to what you want me to provide to the meeting.
Thank you.
I have one note about efficiency. If you have one commissioner says she has to leave at nine o'clock, look how quickly it went.
We knew it was short. That's why we put it there. And you have to stop traveling so much.
I know, I know, I do. I travel more.
So I guess one more thing I just wanted to bounce off you guys is what kind of a place would you want to do a thing? Like, would you want to sit in chairs like this for...
Fiji.
Fiji. So not the shotgun house, is that what you're saying? We would fit. Oh, yeah, the public wouldn't fit. That's true. But, you know, so, so you're thinking like a community room?
Well, like the Annenberg could be cool, but really, really anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
We could look.
Okay, so maybe you can come up with some suggestions. Someplace with comfortable chairs.
The Annenberg is great, but it's actually really expensive and the city doesn't get, doesn't give itself any kind of break.
Ah, that's too bad.
But the back on the beach, they have a nice room, kind of in the back, and we have some...
It's really, really hot in there. Like a...
But some, my only suggestion would be something that's casual. You know, something that's not too, super rigid.
How about the carousel?
Good chairs are important. Okay, I think we've done this. We know what our assignment is. When you see this coming back, I expect you all to have really organized information for us. And if you don't, you'll be in big trouble. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, I just want to remind everyone here and to anybody who might be listening, which is, I guess, Catherine, that our next meeting will be in the main library. Is it earlier? I don't know that information.
Oh, it's regular time, regular time.
Seven o'clock, main library. MLK Auditorium. All right.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.